The meeting of the Waco City Council to order, uh, the Waco City Council on November 16th, 2021 to order at 3:00 PM. Now please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. I wanted to take a moment just to say, uh, welcome, Alice Rodriguez. I think this is her first, uh, meeting and we're so glad that she's here with us today.
Thank you.
And, uh, looking forward to a good meeting with our council. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any item, agenda item, or during the hearing of visitors, uh, portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one, three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to, due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is anyone present who wishes to speak on any work session, agenda item? If not, then we will move on, um, to the minutes of our meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes of the previous meeting? If not, those will stand approved and we'll move on, um, to, uh, a report from our city manager, Bradley Ford.
Thanks, Mayor, and welcome, council. I've, um, gonna highlight first a change to the agenda. That's regarding Resolution 838, the Lyons-Den lease. We are pulling that from today's agenda and we'll be bringing that back to a future meeting. On organizational updates, wanted to take a moment and introduce Dan Quant to the city council. Dan's sitting up front. Why don't you give him a wave, Dan? Dan will be leading the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the CVB, on an interim basis over the next few months. Dan joined our team November 8th and comes to us as a 38-year veteran of the CVB business, most recently serving as Senior Vice President in Amarillo, but also previously served in South Padre Island, Lincoln, Nebraska, and the beautiful Grand Forks, North Dakota. If you haven't heard of it, it's great. Dan, uh, serves on a variety of boards, uh, around the state in leadership in this industry, including the Texas Travel Industry Association's Legislative Committee. He's a past chairman of the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau and quite a leader in that industry. I'm excited for the council and public to get to interact with Dan over the next few months and let's give him a warm round of applause.
And we're glad you're here, um, in this interim capacity and look forward to getting to know you while you are here.
Alright, thanks, Mayor. Our next, um, recognition item for employees is, is an important one. As the council is well aware and the public, this past week, uh, the country observed Veterans' Day, and I wanted to take a moment to do the same here, except in a more direct, city-oriented way. I'm really proud to serve as city manager of a city that honors its veterans and honors all who serve. Each year, our human resources team conducts a, a census of our employees to determine how many veterans work for the city. And this year's survey indicates we have at least 128 veterans on staff here, including in 17 different departments, well-represented across the organization. And today, we're joined in the audience by quite a few of our city employees who are veterans, and I just wanted to give the council a chance and general public a chance to say thank you for their service to our country and our community, so.
We have the ability to, um, serve in this capacity to, uh, be on this council and conduct democracy as it's played out at the local level here because of the sacrifice, um, and service of our veterans and their families. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you to our city staff members who have served, um, our team, um, and our community, who served our country, um, honorably to protect the democracy that we so cherish.
We'll have to clip that last part out because some of our veterans left. I think they didn't think they were supposed to stay, so. I'll clip that and get it emailed to the, to the 128 employees, but we agree, Mayor, we're very proud to have them on our team. Alright, the review of the, uh, business session, I did wanna highlight that we have two informal reports on the agenda today. One regarding library fines and our policies related to that, as well as one discussing a fireworks enforcement plan, which was a follow-up to a prior agenda discussion. We also have seven public hearings on the agenda today, and Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will be covering those later in the work session. Given our packed work sessions, work session schedule, as you've probably seen, um, I'm only gonna highlight two of the 20 resolutions on the agenda this afternoon, and the first one is Resolution 2021-837, which is a resolution approving a Chapter 380 agreement with Quinn Campus, Inc., uh, for $50,000 to support their efforts to assess the structural condition of Johnson Hall located at 1020 Elm and develop a plan to preserve and restore this incredible facility. If you're not familiar, this is Johnson Hall shown on the screen. It has been unoccupied since approximately the 1990s, but previously served as a library, dormitory, dining facility, and also academic classroom facility at Paul Quinn Col- College, which was located in Waco for more than 100 years. The building's about a 36,000 square feet in size, um, and is 99 years old, approximately, and was designed by William Sidney Pittman, who was the first practicing black architect in Texas. So it has some definite historical significance. Certainly excited and supportive of this resolution because it'll really help determine the next steps to renovate this significant facility in our community. Second highlight, oh, sure.
Um, thank you Bradley for highlighting this. It's, it's especially important to me, um, as this is one of the anchor institutions of District 1, um, far beyond its, its educational, um, opportunity that it provided for not only Wacoans, but, you know, people around the country. It, it served as home for a lot of the offspring of education, so the businessmen, the teachers, the dentists, the lawyers, they all walked through Paul Quinn College. And, um, you know, I remember I was looking at a presentation that the Texas Historical Commission did, and when Johnson Hall had a sign over the top of it, and I remember seeing that as a girl, and I think it's important that we do our part to see that this building lives again. There are tremendous opportunities that are in place, and I am incredibly excited about the partnerships that are expining to, to participate with this, and it is both educational, I mean, I have said from the beginning, you know, if Quinn can have a satellite campus in Plano, they can come home. So, I, you know, we were talking with Paul Quinn College about what that looks like, but not only that, uh, there are so many workforce opportunities, um, as we work with Prosper Waco, with Upskill Waco, what does that look like to have a facility within community? Not necessarily having people having to go to something to get trained and to better themselves, but be able to, in their own neighborhood, advance in the tremendous workforce opportunities we have in this city. The possibilities are endless, and I think that we pride ourselves with being nimble and fluid in what could happen in this building, but that, we are, we as a city are committed to doing our part, um, speaks volumes to how we want Waco, East Waco, District 1 to advance. And I'm incredibly appreciative of this commitment for the, um, structural assessment for this building, and I look forward to what happens. Not only is, you know, Pittman was the first black architect in the state of Texas, he was the son-in-law of Booker T. Washington, and none of that, uh, needs to go unnoticed. So I think it's imperative that we continue to walk this line and see these things through so that history can continue to live.
Yeah, this, this is a real commitment to, a real, um, example of the city's commitment to historic preservation, our commitment to the core of the city, um, and, uh, doing our part to ensure that the legacy of this structure is honored, um, with some of the uses that Councilmember Bearfield mentioned, and I don't think that the complete renovation of the structure is something that, uh, we'll be able to do alone at the city.
No.
But by getting this kick-started, and we'll be able to work with community partners to really ensure that the legacy of this building is honored, um, and I'm excited for the entirety of our city and this part of the community to really see the fruits of that come to be.
Alright, the, um, second highlight I had for you this afternoon, council, is Resolution 2021-843, which, uh, will be covered later on in the work session by Nick and Drew, but I wanted to highlight, uh, this item in particular because there's been a, a slight change, uh, from prior discussions that we've had with the city council related to the actual amount, the maximum amount of issuance, and wanted to highlight that for the council. It's primarily related to, um, preliminary interest rates we received over the last week, and it's allowed us to increase the total issuance or the maximum issuance from $109 million to $116 million, which will allow us to continue, of course, our focus on infrastructure, uh, primarily streets and, and parks. I will bring you a revised capital improvement plan in, in the coming weeks that addresses that additional $7 million and tells you where, where I'll recommend putting that, but I do anticipate it'll be in the streets and parks areas. And on the agenda day, we have no ordinances, um, so if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
City Manager Ford, I wanted to, uh, thank you and the library administration and staff for the wonderful, uh, library IR that was, uh, presented on some of the patrons who get, fall a little behind on their fees. Uh, I did wanna say, as a proud librarian spouse, uh, it warmed my heart to see the ways in which the city is working, uh, to make sure, to put a emphasis on children's literacy and children's access to our books. So, uh, thank you for all that you do, Ms. Day, Deidra, and all of the library staff, to work with folks and meet them where they are, uh, so that they don't get barred from the library. Thank you.
Also, along the library lines, um, similar to Councilmember Borderud, I'm a huge fan of our libraries and think that we have just an incredible array of services. I've been doing some research into this idea of fine-free libraries, and there is some really compelling research of what big cities like Boston, or Austin, or San Diego have done to remove fines in order to create higher access to lower-income residents and to minimize the disproportionate impact that fines have on low-income folks. So would love to have city staff continue to explore this with, um, Texas communities like Abilene, and New Braunfels, and Alpine, and Frisco, and big cities like Fort Worth, and San Antonio, and Austin that have already committed to this, and see how we can continue that work of equity and take this a couple steps farther forward.
Sounds good.
Uh, on the fireworks enforcement plan, uh, informal report, I just think that this is something that, um, shows the proactive work our community, or city staff does to really be thoughtful, um, we've heard, um, it seems like it's been a mounting, um, concern over the noise pollution and safety concerns that come from fireworks, and kind of here leading up to the, uh, New Year's holiday, I think really disseminating the information of what our strategy is gonna be around that, um, shows the, the thoughtfulness, um, that our entire team is putting into, uh, addressing this, uh, community concern. Um, so I appreciate our city staff for doing that, and encourage our residents, um, to check out this, uh, informal report, um, and the agenda packet on our city website to learn more about the work that our city is doing to try to address this, uh, concern and, and problem that we've seen in town. Anything else on informal reports? Thanks, staff.
Uh, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, uh, to staff. Are we done with, uh, the informal reports?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't wanna, okay, uh, Resolution 842, uh, City Manager Ford, would you explain to me a little bit what that entails and what that is? I don't think I've ever seen that before, and I may have and don't, just don't remember, but I need it to know a little bit, uh, about this.
Yeah, let me, um, either Ryan or, or Chief are welcome to come up, but it's a, it, 842 involves a investigative tool that our detectives and, and various members of the police department use for background research, but I think Chief or Ryan could probably speak more in detail to it. You, you probably, Councilmember, don't recognize it because it is a different one than we've used in the past.
I, I didn't remember the name, so that kinda threw me a little bit, and I thought, well, I need to ask.
Yeah, good, good, well.
Yes, ma'am. It's, the Clear Service is actually a new service, um, that's replacing the one that they had been using for a number of years. It's just more, it's more efficient than the old service was, so that's the, that's the, the cause for the name change. It searches, uh, o- open source information, uh, out on the internet and allows, uh, it enhances investigations and the speed of those investigations.
Okay, thank you. I always call him Chief, and I know he's not Chief anymore.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the agenda? Alright, um, thank you Bradley. So I believe our consent agenda, um, will consist of, um, Resolutions 2021-834 through, uh, 853, um, 835 and 838 have been pulled by staff from the consent agenda, is that right? And 844 and 845 are being pulled from the consent agenda because we have a speaker coming to speak. Sound right? Anything else? Very good. And with that, I believe we'll move to our first work session.
Alright, thanks, Mayor. I wanna invite our first work session up, and that is the redistricting, uh, discussion. I believe we have Jennifer Manning and, uh, Mike Morrison here. Council, as you'll recall, you put together a really great team to help manage the redistricting process, including an advisory committee, uh, which Jennifer Manning has served as the chair very well. That committee's work's been heavily supported, um, by Professor Mayor, uh, Mike Morrison, who serves as the city's consultant in this project, as well as City Attorney Jennifer Ritchie, who deserves, uh, a kudos for her work on this. At this time, I'd like to give the mic over to Jennifer Manning, who, uh, who can provide us a briefing on the activities of the committee.
Thank you Bradley, and thank you to the council. We so appreciate, uh, the trust that you put in our committee. Um, I will tell you, the committee members were, uh, very happy to serve on this committee, and, uh, we had a great, uh, group that was very, um, vested in our process, and so that made this, uh, crash course in redistricting and learning all that, uh, that we needed to and needed to, uh, about this process, a, a great one, and so, great group, thank you very much for, uh, your participation and your appointment of our committee members. Um, I would say that we met, uh, three different times, um, and Professor Morrison obviously provided a key part of our, uh, crash course and shared, I think, the similar recommendation that he did with council for us to start with. Um, given that there was, uh, I guess, agreement amongst council members on quite a few of the suggestions that Professor Morrison had made, we chose to focus our efforts on a couple of areas that were, uh, still kind of pending, and so that's kind of where, um, all of our instruction to Professor Morrison, and then also request to, uh, Councilmember Bearfield and Councilmember Paul Palmer, um, where those came from. And so thank you to both of you for, uh, sharing statements of position with us. We had great, uh, you know, great, um, we, we thank you very much for that. It was super helpful, um, I think it meant, uh, a lot to our committee members to hear directly from you, instead of kind of trying to determine, um, where we thought you might land on certain issues, so that was very helpful. Um, we also heard from, um, one of our neighborhood associations, the Brook Oaks Neighborhood Association, and one of our members also went out directly, um, and talked to, uh, citizens that were in what we called the Alexander area, getting some, uh, feedback there as well, and wanted to be sure that we were hearing from the constituents in both of those areas that we were, uh, considering. So, excuse me, with all that being said, um, I think you've been provided the booklet from Jennifer Ritchie, the Citizens Redistricting Committee materials, and it's, excuse me.
Jennifer, we're gonna get you some water.
Sure.
We're gonna get you some water.
Oh, I'm good, I'm good. Um, so we have, uh, our statement and recommendation from the Citizens Redistricting Advisory Committee. So you have that, "The Alexander area depicted in attached Exhibit A become part of City Council District 1," and that "City Council District 4 retain the river area depicted in the attached Exhibit A." Um, those are both the recommendations that are made on behalf of the Citizens Redistricting Advisory Committee, and you will see that attachment there, um, on the back page of the recommendation. Thank you.
Any questions for Jennifer? Or Mike? Any questions for Mike?
I'm just here to carry your briefcase.
But in case people are contemplating questions or comments, I just wanna, um, start by thanking, um, Jennifer specifically, who served as the chair, but really the entirety of this committee. Um, this is an important, um, component to, uh, our city, um, this is an important aspect of our democracy, and, um, sometimes, you know, I think the, um, in, in the perception of Americans, local government, school boards, um, community colleges, city council districts don't necessarily, um, draw the same eye or attention as national redistricting conversations might, but they're important. And, um, this local democracy, um, uh, work, this local democratic work that we do here is important. Um, so to the committee members who diligently worked to ensure that our community is going to be well-represented, um, uh, at this council, um, for the local city work that we're doing is so meaningful. So to each of the committee members, thank you for your time. Um, the members of this committee were busy people that are in demand, um, because of their capacity, because of their competency, um, and so it was a sacrifice for each of them to give their time to serve their community in this way, and I just wanna thank each of them, um, with all sincerity. Uh, Jennifer, thank you for serving as chair. Um, when I called you, I think I said something like, hey, this'll be really easy, it'll be super smooth, this shit, and I don't know if that was always the case, or if you were cursing my name at any point, but I do wanna say how much I appreciate you leading out on, um, on this discussion, um, and convening this group, um, for this important work. So sincerely, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And I will say, um, with our group, you know, there was a lot of great debate and discussion getting to this recommendation, and, and kind of as we were talking about coming forward to the council, um, there were a couple of matters for further consideration that they just asked that I, that I share also, just that kind of came to fruition during the process, and really that was really a focus on, um, District 5 going forward. I think it is one that is growing, um, and we know the, the population growth and the, um, you know, kind of focus that is on that particular district, and so that was something that definitely, uh, was included in our discussions, and I think you'll find, um, in your workbook, there was, um, some communication from one of the citizens in that district as well, uh, for your consideration. And then also, uh, looking at the riverfront, obviously the river is a, a prime, um, piece of our community that we all love dearly, and just, um, looking at, uh, what that's going to look like in the next two, four, five, 10 years, and, and how that affects redistricting as we approach it in the future, I think was another, uh, definite focus for our group and one that they wanted to have communicated to council.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just add a hearty second to the mayor's comments. Thank you Jennifer so much for your wonderful service, and, uh, thank you, I see, uh, several board, or several committee members here in attendance. So grateful, uh, Pat, Kim, and, and many others that are here with us today and that put in the good work, uh, to hammer out, uh, this wonderful recommendation. So thank you all, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Read the names of the committee members really quick, just so I, they can get the honor that they're deserved. That's Jennifer, um, Manning, Josh Caballero, uh, Benjamin Gomez, um, Chris Houston, Curtis Cleveland, Tony Herbert, Isabel Lozano, Elaine Batello, Connie Nichols, Pat Atkins, Janet Hickson, and Linda Lewis, and so to each of these, um, incredible members of our community, thank you.
Um, were you going? Anybody going? Okay. So thank you Jennifer and committee for taking this time. I really, I understood the severity of redistricting just by nature of what we've seen in the past, and, you know, Texas has been riddled with, uh, redistricting issues, um, but I agree with you, Mayor, that at this level, it, it is as important because this sets the footprint for what state, county, state, national will be. Um, it is a great, I'm gonna use the word responsibility, to forecast for a decade, and that you all took the time to do so out of your busy lives is, uh, a evidence of the service and commitment that you have to our community. Um, one of the things I did want to make clear, and is that we all believe and understand that the population numbers alone don't equal direct, that, uh, equal direct access to something like voting, you know, that, that can't be the only measure. You know, we have to consider all of the facets, because if we don't, then we've missed something that'll be, not only a, uh, we've missed a history lesson, but we've missed an opportunity to carry forward in the future. Looking planning, looking forward to planning this next decade, um, we have to, is our responsibility to put things in place to make it better. Considering all the things that we don't know, um, and we must, if, if our commitment to this city is advancing all Wacoans equitably, you know, we have to be accountable, uh, to see that that actually happens, and this is one of those tools that we have to use to see that it actually happens. We're the run, we're the ones that are responsible to make sure that justice rolls down. Redistricting must not be, it must not be one of those things that we get weary and well-doing, so again, I appreciate the time and commitment that each of you put. I am glad that we chose to have a Citizens Advisory Council, because I don't think that we could've made these decisions alone. I think we needed to have input from the people who live in the communities that we are affecting, that, that would change, making sure that they understood how this process works, making sure that they understood what lines actually change and what don't. But giving them a responsibility for the advancement of this future also, um, because we know that we're the ones, at the end of the day, that are gonna be held responsible for this, and the decisions that were made and presented, um, and tossed around and gone back and then reconsidered, um, you know, we have to be responsible for making sure that what we intended is what actually happens, because good intentions are not enough. So, um, I appreciate your working with us, hearing from us, the concerns that we have going forward, the concerns looking in the past, and hopefully that the decision that we made will be one that will carry us for this decade, and then in 10 years, when the next council is sitting up here doing the same thing, they'll be like, whew, okay, that, now we go and grow. So we appreciate your time and effort, commit, and commitment.
Thank you.
I also wanna say thank you, uh, I came in at the tail end of this, but I did watch some of the presentations Mayor Morrison, uh, made to the council and to WISD in their, uh, discussions of, uh, redistricting as well, and because I came in on the tail end, I wanna thank Isabel Lozano and Benjamin Gomez for representing District 2. Uh, I know Ms. Lozano, I do not know Mr. Gomez, but, uh, I'm waiting to hear from him and, and get to know him as well, but I thank them for representing District 2, and they did a good job, because I liked what they put together for District 2, and, uh, uh, butting up with District 3 as well, so, uh, thank them for that service that they provided to District 2, and again, Mayor Morrison, thank you for your work and your committee as well. Thank you from me, the District 2 representative who came in at the tail end.
Well, coming from someone who's done this four times from up there, thank you, Alice.
We should all be thanking you, for sure.
I know, when, when Andre said, uh, when this, the next council 10 years from now, I almost made a joke, like, and maybe Alice will be up here.
Hopefully. Maybe, uh, maybe, maybe, maybe 10 years, yeah, maybe so. Jim, have you got something to say about that, me staying off for 10 more years?
I appreciate you guys doing it. Yeah, just, yeah, I wanna tip my cap to, uh, Jennifer Manning for chairing this thing, uh, District 5 of a person, and also, uh, Curtis Cleveland and Janet Hickson for volunteering to do, to do this, and Professor Morrison, of course, thank, thanks for guiding the, guiding the logic and the, and the data. It's, uh, great work, appreciate it.
This was a cherry on top of an intense political year, I think, for all of us, but I really appreciate you, Jennifer, for faithfully, um, leading us through this process with integrity and creating a lot of space to hear from residents across the city. I feel really grateful for everybody on the committee that really amplified and placed a lot of value on folks that live in Brook Oaks and folks that live in the Alexander area, and hearing some of the nuances and the concerns and the range, um, of beliefs that each person hel- holds, because we're all complex humans with a different history and different perspectives, but really grateful for such a thoughtful group, and thank you, Professor Morrison, for leading us through this process and giving us, um, quite the lesson in all things redistricting. I will never watch a city, or a school board, or a country go through redistricting with quite the same eyes as I have now, having been in the thick of it, so thank you to everyone that was a part of this, and the City Secretary's Office, and City Manager, and Legal for doing this. and Legal for doing all of the pieces to make sure we had accurate information and that the folks on the committee had the maps they needed and the accurate data to make the best information with the information available. So thank you all.
Agreed on the city staff. Thank you to Jennifer Ritchie, who has played a huge part in this, day in and day out, responding to questions and emails, and really served as our staff liaison. So Jennifer, thank you so much for your hard work. I mean, this redistricting process that actually started long before Jennifer Manning and her committee formed, even before Professor Mayor Morrison started working with us. Jennifer was hard at work ensuring that our city was ready to go for that. And thanks also to Esmeralda Hudson and the City Secretary's Office for their work on the, particularly around the Citizen Advisory Committee, but all of their other work too. Thanks to all of our staff. So for, and regards to next steps, I'm assuming that we would need to put this on the December 8th agenda. Is that what recommendations are for, I believe that's the date, am I right about that, or?
Seventh.
Seventh? Okay, apologies. Is that, would that, for public, a public hearing on the December 7th agenda?
Yes. Yes, Mayor.
Stash prepared, if council so wants to put an ordinance on the agenda for, on December 7th.
Believe that is a good next step for us. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
All right, Mayor. Our next work session is discussion of planning public hearing agenda items, and it'll be led by Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We do have seven public hearings this evening. The first one is dealing with our subdivision plats. We have three subdivision plats for consideration tonight, the first being the final plat of construction plans of Chapel Ridge Two Edition Phase Two. This is ongoing subdivision out in the far west Waco, off of Chapel Road and Ritchie Road. You can see about half of the subdivision has been built out to this point, and this is an additional phase. It does include nine single-family lots, and then some road construction for a cul-de-sac, and then a large lot that will be used for detention for the area. This one's a little bit different than others, the street and infrastructure is actually already constructed. So the approval, even though it does include the construction plans, most of the infrastructure is already constructed for this phase.
Clint, real quick on that. So that kind of very large lot that looks undeveloped and that will continue going forward to be as a detention?
That's the intent, yes.
They don't look to develop that?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The next plat is Saddle Creek Two Edition Phase Three. This is out in the China Spring area of our city limits. You can see China Spring Road, highway here. Saddle Creek has a commercial and office component of it, which is Saddle Creek One. And then the back portion is residential. And this will finish out the subdivision. It includes 51 lots. You can see them here. There's connection points into the adjacent Cougar Ridge subdivision for connectivity, and then a stubout road that will connect to potential future development. So we have that connectivity between subdivisions, so everybody's not having to go out to the highway to go to the adjacent development. Again, standard development requirements on this one, and Plan Commission did recommend approval of both the plans, the construction plans and the plat. And then our last plat is Creekside Edition Phase Nine. This is another single-family residential subdivision on the other side of town, along Ritchie Road and Warren Road, just inside our city limits, that blue area, city of Hewitt. This includes 55 lots and similar. You can see the subdivision being built out here that will eventually connect to Polo Park Road, that will connect Warren to Panther Way, which will be a collector's street to help alleviate some of the traffic on Ritchie Road. And all three of these subdivision plats are subject to impact fees with the phase-in rate that council approved. The next public hearing, 828, is an abandonment of some right-of-way for Dutton Avenue. This is actually, the council saw this back in April and approved this. The description of the abandonment area had the wrong acreage on it. It was at 3.574. And after they've done some additional surveying, it actually, the land acreage is 3.905. So we're bringing it back to you, just to make sure we get the ordinance with the approved acreage for the abandonment. But this is a section of Dutton Avenue between University Parks and South Fourth Street, adjacent to Baylor University. Baylor has just recently started construction of the Mark and Paula Heard Welcome Center, and they are looking at connecting their campus by reducing the width of Dutton Avenue through that section. It's currently a four-lane boulevard section, and they're looking at to make it more walkable and accessible across there. And then just some pictures of it. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of this amendment for the larger acreage, and with the same conditions as the first time back in April, which is that they'll have to retain easements, or relocate the utilities, and also retain accessibility through that from Dutton, or University Parks over to Fourth Street for vehicle and pedestrian access. And the next public hearing, 829, is a special permit renewal from Sinekor Foundation. This is their special permit for Transitional Shelter Two, an O2 zoning district. This is their facility out by the old Hillcrest Hospital that opened up back in 2012. Transitional Shelter is a residential facility providing temporary shelter for persons who are receiving therapy and counseling for support staff who are present at all time. The residents are present for one or more of the following purposes, and their facility is a drug and alcohol treatment facility. They do treat up to 60 adults. That is a condition in the permit, that that's the max. Again, they've been operating for a little over 10 years. We've had no issues with their permit or any complaints, and we did not receive any opposition from our notices out of 38 notices.
I'm glad to hear that. I was on the council when we first passed this. It was real controversial, if some of us here remember. The citizens did not want this particular facility in that area. But the council saw the brighter picture or the better picture anywhere we approved it. And I'm glad to hear there have been no issues, because that was one of the concerns of the neighborhoods around there, and I understand that. But the facility, the managers all said that they were going to be very observant and be on top of everything that was going on in the facility. So they were really going to be very careful with their residents. And so I'm glad to hear there have been no issues and no complaints and no cards sent back that the residents didn't want that in the areas. I'm glad to hear that. So we did something right, guys.
Councilmember.
That is a need. That is a great need.
Yeah, I think it's obviously a very needed service for our city, and also speaks to how Sinekor has operated that facility, where, you know, the neighborhood has embraced it and hadn't caused any issues.
Yeah. Ms. Holmes over here, I'll echo Councilmember Rodriguez's comment, because I was there when it was originally granted, but I think I was there the last time it was, I was here the last time it was renewed. And the lack of opposition to the transitional shelter speaks to how well it's been run. And I drive by this facility every day, and it's very well maintained, and they're doing good work, as we both mentioned. So it's probably a poster child for how other transitional shelters should be run.
Also wild, just to see the old hospital in this photo, now that that is a completely blank slate.
Yeah, that is not there anymore.
I live not too far from here and want to echo that this is a strong asset and a needed resource in our community, and living a few blocks from here, and very confident that they are a good neighbor, and that it only adds to the quality of life in Dean Highland as opposed to detracting from it.
I hadn't been in the, I drive by it every day, like Councilmember Holmes, and I hadn't been in it, and they invited me to come. And I toured the facility with the owner and all the management team, and it is indeed a well-run facility. I think that there may have been a card that said what, that, from the neighborhood, that said they were glad that this facility was here. We know how imperative and important it is to our citizens to be able to receive the help that they need in the heart of the city. So I absolutely agree that this permit needs to be renewed.
Staff and the Plan Commission did recommend another five-year renewal, just so we can have the opportunity to check in on it again, make sure it's still operating. The next public hearing, 830, is a request from Kim Lee-Horm and his associates on behalf of Burnt Oak Investments LLC for a special permit. And this is a very long description, but really what that means is for a drive-through window. This property is a little over an acre in size, between 18th and 19th Street and on I-35. It does have access points to 18th and 19th. It is currently zoned, I'm sorry about that, commercial zoning, C2. They are proposing to put in a Starbucks restaurant there. The C2 does allow by right restaurant use, but because this property abuts residential uses that are on Bagby, anything with a drive-through requires a special use permit. So the request is just for the drive-through window for the Starbucks restaurant. Here's their site plan. So you can see 18th is on their right-hand side here, and then 19th Street is here. They'll have a driveway that connects from 18th back to 19th. And then you see the store with the parking lot, and their actual drive-through is here. We did have one of the neighbors come and speak at the Plan Commission hearing with concerns on how this could potentially impact some of the residential houses that back up to this. And you can see on this plan, we put some conditions on there to mitigate that, one being they'll, they're required to put in an eight-foot privacy fence here. And then there's a landscape buffer that will be heavily densely planted to provide that buffer between the back of those homes and the driveway here. We also put some requirements on there about their sight lighting have to face away from the residents. And then another concern they had was about traffic going back into the neighborhood. And the way this is situated, because 18th Street is a one-way street, because they do have that connection to 19th Street, you'll be able to go either, either from the frontage road to 19th and come into the facility, or 18th and come into the facility and exit back out without having to get back into the neighborhood. And so I think those three things address the concerns of the gentleman that spoke at the hearing. We did not receive any other notices back on that.
Clint, on that really quick, given that this is commercial zoning, if they weren't applying for a drive-through, a commercial facility could go in this location for construction without, and we wouldn't be able to require a fence, we wouldn't be able to require foliage, and we wouldn't require lights to go away from the residents. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, because the residential properties that back up to this lot are actually zoned for O3, which is a mix of office and residential. Those buffering requirements don't apply. And so special permit does give us the ability to add some of those requirements.
I would, I would, if this does pass, I might encourage staff to reach out to those residents, just to let them know that, in fact, this special permit allows for ideally a better outcome than what it might be, but for this drive-through special permit, because a commercial use could go in there, and if it doesn't have a drive-through, then it might end up having a more adverse effect for the neighbors potentially. So something to keep in mind. I appreciate that. Is the word dense used in your restriction for the landscaping?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
The difference may be in?
Yes, it's an all-season landscape screen, four feet in width, densely planted with a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs, with an initial height of three feet, and will attain a height of six feet within 36 months of this installation, and shall be installed along the property boundary with the adjacent residential uses.
Well, Mayor, thank you for asking staff to reach out to the residents. I did drive out there. And thank you, Clint, and staff for putting in those extra, the buffers and the lighting away from the neighborhoods. We did this with HEB on Irving Lee, if y'all remember. And it worked out well with those extra provisions in there for them to, for the fence and the lighting and all that. Some of that lighting is good for the neighborhood, so it's not entirely dark. But I want to thank you and the staff for looking out for our residents, because I certainly would be one of the first ones up here to tell you no way you're gonna do that. And thank you, Mayor, for reaching out, asking staff to reach out to the residents, because they're the ones that are impacted by this. They're not going anywhere. They've lived there for years, and they're going to be there. So we have to be, what is the word I'm trying to use? We have to be cognizant of the fact that they're going to be there, and they're going to live there. And they have to, for lack of a better word, put up with the new projects and the new development and all that on 18th and 19th, and where they're living. Because when they first started living there, all that wasn't there. And I know, because my parents live right there as well. So thank you for looking out for our residents. Thank you, Mayor, for that. And Clint, you know how I am about my residents. We need to take care of them, and thank you for making sure that they're taken care of.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll reach out. We were able to share a little bit of this information with them at the Plan Commission meeting, but we'll definitely reach out, back out to them and show them the updated plans that actually show all that on the plan that y'all see up here. The next public hearing is 831. This is a request by TSTC on 42 acres of land that they own out by their campus there, off of Concord and Aviation Parkway. This is actually a portion of the old Conley Golf Course that they own. It's 42 acres. The remaining part of that is privately owned. It currently has a land use designation, and our comprehensive plan is open space that dates back to the golf course. And then it's zoned, R1B, single-family. But you can see all the zoning around it is industrial zoning, where you have Aviation Industrial Park with Sanderson Farms and Sharon Williams. And then the TSTC campus is not zoned, because it's owned by the state, but you have the L3 facility, which obviously is an industrial use. So they are requesting that their, this acreage gets rezoned into, to match what's around it for potential industrial development that would complement the industrial district out there. No notices, no, we did get one response back that was in favor of it, but no opposition to this. And Plan Commission did recommend it by a vote of 12 to zero. The next public hearing, 832, is 1.6 acres along Steinbeck Bend near China Spring Road for a zone change from O2 to C2. This property, this rezoning is actually a portion of a larger property that's about six acres. in size. Uh, part of it is already zoned, uh, C2, um, and they would like to zone the portion of it that's O2 to C2 to match up with the, the rest of the property there. Uh, this is, this acreage is all owned by one family and they are looking to sell the commercial portion of their acreage, uh, and retain the rest of it for residential. And so the request, uh, is O2 to C2, so they're gonna have it all zoned, uh, the same when they sell that property. Uh, fifteen notices on this one and, and, and none returned and , uh, Plan Commission did, uh, recommend approval of it as well. Uh, and then our last public hearing, uh, is another abandonment. This is abandonment of Forty-Second Street, uh, between Trias Avenue and Call Court Avenue. Uh, this abandonment is associated with the, uh, in our local agreement, uh, between Waco ISD, uh, City of Waco and McLean County, Texas for, uh, the, the redevelopment out here, uh, that will relocate, uh, the Lake Air Little League facilities and then accommodate, uh, the, reconstruction of the new Waco High that recently had the, uh, bond approved at the election. Uh, so, so for, this is the portion of Forty-Second Street here. Um, you can see the existing Waco High and the Lake Air that will be relocated. This, this is just, um, and this is subject to change, but this is kind of where they are right now. WISD with, uh, plans for the school. You can see right here is where, uh, Forty-Second Street would be, which is right in the middle of the new school. So, uh, it does need to be abandoned. There, there's, there are, and here's the street here, where the existing school and Little League on this side. Um, there's a lot of dominoes that need to fall, uh, to make all this happen with the agreement. So this is one part of it. Um, so we do have some conditions, um, that go along with this abandonment. One being that, uh, uh, either we have some utilities that run through there. So those either have to be easements granted or, uh, the utilities to be relocated. Obviously with a new building going there, uh, they will be relocating those, those, uh, utilities out of there right away. Uh, there's some deed information. Um, we are, Lake Air, uh, Little League is, uh, planning to have, uh, their next season there. And so this abandonment is subject to keeping that access open to, uh, provide access to Lake Air Little League until, uh, July of next year, at which time, um, the, the new facility for the Little League will be built. Uh, and then we did, uh, this, uh, statement here in red was added as a recommended addition to the, uh, to the conditions, um, for council to consider that the street shall be maintained to its current street condition during that time period. So not only the, the access remain the way it is, but also the street condition remain the way it is for that time period until Lake Air is, uh, done with their existing facility. Uh, and then that last condition there talks about the, the, the three-party agreement needs to be finalized, uh, before, um, you know, abandonment's official.
Clint, do we know where the, uh, Little League is gonna be playing or practicing during this reconstruction period? Do we, are they, do they have, I don't remember if they have a place where they're gonna go or if it's even gonna impact the Little League?
Um, is, is Tom here?
Jonathan?
Jonathan? I'll probably get them to answer because they, they know it, uh, better than I do.
Until Jonathan gets here, I think, Alice, the, the theory was that the season would be over by July. Now, there's practice going on all the time there with select leagues and other little leagues. So I'm kind of concerned about where
Yeah, where they're gonna go.
backup place to practice.
Hello, Councilman, uh, Councilmember. Uh, with Lake Air Little League, as you know, they have baseball and softball. Um, and we have the Challenger fields, uh, and we do anticipate construction to begin on the Challenger softball fields starting, uh, January, February. And so we're working, uh, with those leagues to look, we have the eight fields at Riverbend Park, which offer an option, although it's not in that area. Those are city-run fields to where we have options, uh, to relocate practice fields and also gameplay. Lake Air Little League, the baseball teams, they'll be able to play this season and we anticipate that we would not miss the 2023 season and have the complex open by then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Holmes over here. The, yeah, this is the main access, flip it back, one more, we'd get that one. Yeah, this is the main access road to all of those fields. And, uh, I mean, there's a lot of history there, you know, state championship, baseball team. Uh, it's a neat neighborhood gathering place. And most importantly, that's where my son plays baseball, about ten, ten months out of the year. Ten months out of the year. I'm there three or four nights a week. So, um, I had a lot of questions on this, which we had a quick meeting this morning on the effective date and the maintenance of that road, which I think, you know, not, not that we're asking you to keep it to the highest standard possible, but good enough to where folks can get in and out of there. Cause on, on a summer night, Alice, going to baseball,
Yeah.
baseball games, it can get pretty crowded at the, the ingress egress. Um, and then the conveyance of those existing fields. But it sounds like we're gonna get started. There'll be one more season here at this kind of, this complex, Lake Air Little League complex, and then we're gonna be moving over to the Trias kind of frontage there. And that building theoretically starts late first quarter, early second quarter, twenty-twenty-two, with the thought that we'll be ready to go with the twenty-twenty-three season, um, at the new fields.
Yes, sir. We are anticipating, uh, about a twelve-month construction. Uh, opening day simply held in April, so we are shooting to have that open for the twenty-three season.
Will we have any kind of rendering of what those fields are gonna look like? You know, I, uh, we're a baseball family and we were in Taylor, Texas this weekend, and that's a small city. And they have some beautiful fields out there. And I'm thinking, this is a small city. What happened to us? So, uh, hopefully, I'm sending out hints. Hopefully these, uh, fields will look really nice and to, when we have, uh, outside, out-of-towners come into play, they'll go away thinking like I did. From Taylor, Texas, these are beautiful fields out here and they're maintained, uh, so well. And, uh, the people that run those, uh, fields and the concession stands are just very friendly. And hopefully we'll, uh, all our fields, not just Lake Air fields, but all our fields will at one time have a higher standard of, of, uh, look, you know, like if a small city can do it, why can't we?
Exactly. We're gonna be proud of these. We're excited to work on this project and we'll get you a look at those as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and Clint, yeah, ultimately I'm supportive of the abandonment. And I know that, I, I wanna tip my cap to, you know, Dr. Kincanon and, uh, City Manager Ford and Judge Felton and Mayor Meek. But this whole venue project that's, this is just part of it, um, of how we, how WISD, City Waco and the county are working together and doing these swaps. And as you say, the dominoes have to fall a certain way, uh, and funding and conveyance. It's all working so far because we've built a good, good team of, of government leaders, uh, to make this all work. So I'm, I'm excited if we can help WISD get this, uh, built faster than, I think it makes sense to
And Jim, with the, with the help of, of City Attorney Richie tying all this stuff together.
Yeah.
Disappointed that, that nobody mentioned. One of the most positive things about this abandonment is that our PCI will go up by like point zero 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 one because the road will be gone. You know, I mean.
While WISD has it under, under, uh, conveyance here, they'll probably fix it up. We'll go in the right direction.
Thanks, Clint, and thanks to our entire team for all of their efforts on all of these deals we have coming.
All right.
And just, just so you know, um, we are scheduled to be moving on to the next agenda item at four PM and it is three fifty-nine.
We're doing pretty good. You just jinxed us big time, Mayor.
Way ahead.
Got a schedule. Uh, we do, um, this next one, um, great presentation we've got coming up on our, uh, twenty-twenty-one CIP program debt capacity and proposed twenty-twenty-two certificates of obligation and general obligation refunding bonds with Masterson and Associates LLC, as well as our staff. We'll, we'll have Drew Masterson, of course, joining us at the table, as well as Nick Sarpy, our Director of Office of Management and Budget, as well as Assistant City Manager Paul Kane. Yes, you are at the table, sir. Come on up. Um, and I believe Nick's gonna lead us off in the introduction of this presentation. So, Nick, take us away, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, so Drew is actually gonna walk through the presentation for you today, um, to go over, um, our notice of intent item that you'll have on, um, the agenda for, uh, business session, um, and go over like our pricing and how we plan to, uh, structure the twenty-two bond issue. Um, this is just a preliminary process. We'll come back to you, um, in January with, uh, further information on the actual sale and processing of the transaction. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Drew.
Okay, good afternoon. Again, I'm Drew Masterson with Masterson Advisors. And, uh, it goes without saying, but we're very honored to be your financial advisor and represent you through the bond issuance process every year and, and all the work that goes on behind the scenes leading up to that. Uh, on this page, we just have a history of the bond buyer general obligation index, which is sort of our Dow Jones index of the muni bond world. And you can see, long story short, we're near record lows on that over the last ten years. We hit those lows, uh, last summer and then again this summer. And I wake up every day expecting that to jump up, you know, one percent or something, but we'll keep our fingers crossed till, uh, as you'll see, February fifteenth, when we lock in your rates. So, um, good time to be issuing bonds. Uh, this is the, uh, the numbers behind the bond issue or the CO issue, if you will. Um, we, uh, anticipate just under a hundred million, uh, par amount. We expect that, that those COs will be issued at a premium, generating a total project fund amount at the very bottom of the page of a hundred and fourteen point six-five million. Um, the interest rate that we're currently estimating based on current rates is two-point-two-one percent. We had been working with three percent. And, uh, as your city manager mentioned earlier in the meeting, that lower interest rate plugging in current rates, uh, does generate additional capacity under the tax rate for, for more debt service and more projects. So those are reflected here, uh, in the hundred and fourteen point six-five million. Total debt service would be a hundred and forty-five million over the life. They break out, um, between GO, solid waste, water, W-Mars wastewater and drainage on this page, that hundred and forty-five million of total debt service. You can see most of the different uses are amortized over twenty years. A portion of the W-Mars is amortized over thirty years. We're also looking at, uh, refunding two of your older, um, bond issues issued back in twenty thirteen. Both your certificates of obligation back in twenty thirteen and your GO refunding bonds back then, a total of just under twenty-eight million, uh, that had interest rates ranging from three to five percent. If you look in the upper right-hand side of the page, you see the annual savings on the second column from the right, uh, range from four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand down to a hundred and seven thousand a year over, uh, a fifteen-year period, totaling three million thirty-two thousand, uh, in, in future dollars, two million seven fifty in today's dollars or present value, uh, roughly just under ten percent in that present value. So, um, it's just like refinancing your, your home. You're taking your old rates from an average of three-point-four-two down to an average of one-point-seven-one. No extension of debt or anything like that. The city's, uh, total debt service is shown on this page, broken out by, uh, GO, uh, water waste, water solid waste and the other uses there. Um, you'll have to tell me which ones are which because I'm totally colorblind. Same, uh, data behind that graph. And you'll see you're here, your principal also broken out by use. Uh, in the pie chart on the bottom, you can see twenty-six percent of your existing bonds are general obligation-supported, thirty-nine percent water, thirty-two percent wastewater, two percent solid waste and one percent tax increment zone. The, um, rating process from last year generated these two reports, which we've summarized here. Um, really nothing, nothing, uh, new or remarkable came out through the process last year, uh, which is great because we were in the middle of a, a pandemic. So no surprises is a great thing. Um, and basically the strengths of the city from the rating agency's perspectives are you're, uh, anchored by institutional presence, which means higher ed, growing tourism industry, um, operating surplus and operating reserves are, are very strong. Um, the, uh, S and P side, they, they, they call that growing tourism industry diversification, uh, whatever you wanna call it. It's a good thing. Um, a lot of the same issues there noted as strengths. On the challenges, uh, Moody's sites are weak income indices and then says, well, yeah, but you have a bunch of students that don't have, uh, measurable incomes. So when you average those out, you're, you're fine. And, um, they, they say kind of the same thing about your elevated total outstanding debt. But when you consider that most of your debt is supported by your different utility systems, your, your net tax-supported debt is very manageable.
I like that they appreciate our intuitional presence here.
Is that what I said, intuitional?
The misprint, yeah.
Should've been.
That was, that was good, too.
City, we have amazing intuition. I've only looked at that twenty-five times. I can't believe I missed that. Um, our timeline in, in kind of plain English here, we're looking today, this evening at the notice of intent, which sets a maximum amount that we can issue for the certificates of obligation. Your formal action to approve, uh, both the COs and the GO refunding bonds would be at the January eighteenth meeting, setting, uh, parameters under, uh, which we would be able to execute the transaction. And we will, uh, lock the rates on February fifteenth and bring those results to your council meeting that evening and close and fund in March. The last thing I have for your, your references, uh, House Bill eighteen sixty-nine, which, um, was a major point of contention through the legislature dealing with non-voted debt such as the certificates of obligation that you all issue. Uh, the original bill that came through, um, the House, uh, committees would have eliminated our ability to do what we're doing today. Um, but we, we were able to work, and many of us were able to work with the legislatures. And essentially you could summarize eighteen sixty-nine as a long list of things that are now permitted to be funded with certificates of obligation. The real question is what isn't permitted? And so this is Drew's best summary of the three things that they were, they were trying to get after. It's not in the law anywhere. It's just what wasn't covered, in my opinion. Um, city hall, administrative buildings, library, stadiums, arenas and other entertainment venues. But even those can be financed with COs under all the exceptions listed at the bottom of the page. But generally speaking, if you're gonna finance a brand-new library, a brand-new city hall, you, you need to go to the voters is the, is the general intent of the law. But all of the self-supporting utility debt is very clearly allowed, uh, under, under eighteen sixty-nine, as is renovation of existing facilities such as libraries and city halls. That is all we had. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll just comment here, Holmes over here. The, the, uh, the first thing I wanna say is that refi, I mean, I always, I love where we're just taking current, current debt and all we're doing is just changing the interest rate on it, right? And, and, but it takes effort, pull it together and, and a good rating and the confidence of the bonding agencies to, to do that. But we're, just by that alone, we're saving three million dollars. I mean, that is material and that's a, I wanna thank staff for, for staying on top of that. Cause every year it seems like we find a little bit that we can refi where we don't have pre-pays or lockouts. And, uh, that's, in this interest rate environment, that's fantastic. Um, this is one of the bigger leverage, I guess probably is the biggest leverage position we've taken as a city. we've taken as a city. But, and as I think about it, I look at one of those weaknesses, if you can flip back to that page, or challenges, not weakness, strength and challenge. Greatest challenge is likely to stem from future capital needs related to infrastructure. And I think this council is trying to meet those, those infrastructure needs head-on here because we've got a lot of street work that needs to be done, sidewalks, roads, bridges. And that is why we're taking this on right now in a big way. What we have working in our favor, as you pointed out, is a very low interest rate environment. We have a big balance sheet that's grown quite a bit over the last four or five years. We've got a good cash reserve position. And I think you take these in private sector kind of ratios, debt to worth and, and debt to assets, we're still in a very safe area. And Paul and I have talked a little bit about demonstrating some of that in more municipal peer-city looks, that we're still, we're not stepping out on a limb here and something that's unsafe for the city. But we're also matching long-term assets and long-term debt on the, on these, these improvements that we're making, tying it to a longer term instead of pulling it out of general fund on an annual basis. And we've had recent strength in sales tax that has helped us get to this point where we can address capital improvements in a, in a material way. So as we look at this, again, it's 116 million is the max that we're, we're talking about going forward with today and that we'll refine that as we go forward here in the next couple of months. But I appreciate Masterson's group helping us along the way on this, on this execution.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This is exactly what it takes for us to be able to accomplish the goals that we have in this city is building out a strategic plan and doing this, this good work. So thank you to our city staff for their efforts around this. I'm so proud of those ratings that are on the screen right now and that's not by accident. That's because we have a really diligent, good staff who work hard to ensure that we're able to achieve these ratings. And looking forward to moving forward in the days ahead and accomplishing so many of our goals because of the work that's been done here today. Thanks. And it is 4:12, that is three minutes ahead of schedule.
All right, pressure's on mic over here. So our next work session, Mayor and Council, I'm real excited about. I know y'all will be too. It's our discussion of the city's resident engagement application solution. This is going to be led by Mike Seeride, our chief information officer. As the council, I don't have to preach to y'all, but one of probably your most significant priorities since I've been manager as well as the years prior has been to communicate and specifically to build tools that our residents, businesses and visitors can use to report issues and seek resolutions in our city. And so you funded two major projects to help with resident engagement. That includes this one that you're going to hear about today as well as the upcoming new website. Each of those projects, Mike and his team have spent hundreds of hours on and it's been fun to watch as your manager. I'm excited for you and the public to hear where we are in the process, including the intentionality that the team has really used to plan the app, how it works, and all building towards a, rolling it out later in December of this year. So, Mike, take us away.
Thank you, Bradley, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Excited to bring this quick presentation to you. I know this is important to Council. On the right-hand side there, the MyWaco icon, that'll be the icon that you see when you download it on your iPhone or your Android or your iPad. So we're excited about that. Mr. Jose Zuniga in Municipal Information designed that and did a great job with it. This first slide highlights a few of the key features that MyWaco will deliver to our residents and our city departments. The MyWaco environment is capable of delivering a personalized one-stop-shop user experience to quickly interact with the city of Waco. Our residents will be empowered to directly communicate with city departments through a CityWaco branded iPhone or Android app or a CityWaco branded website. The MyWaco solution keeps residents' requests front and center while keeping the resident and city departments engaged with email and text notifications. We're also excited to leverage the analytics and the reporting modules to generate a wide range of customized reports. Multilingual translation is also supported and we will promote Spanish versions of MyWaco solution. Most importantly, departments can leverage the MyWaco environment to manage a wide range of resident requests from illegal dumping, graffiti, pothole concerns and code compliance, to name just a few. Our residents will also be able to, be able to submit compliments related to city staff and city departments or open a general request from within the MyWaco system. This next slide summarizes our project timeline and highlights the remaining items within the project schedule. Our initial timeline was four months and we decided to move it out an additional two months to focus on the user experience and to make sure our city departments are ready for this change. I have been very impressed with all of our departments as we design the report types, the workflows and the layout of the MyWaco system. This next slide highlights a few of the key milestones remaining within the project plan. User training for our departments is a priority and a major focus will be to create training materials and standard operating procedures for our departments, which will generate consistency in how we leverage MyWaco to respond to our residents and quickly solve resident requests. A digital marketing strategy is currently being developed and our current plan is to go with a soft launch the week of December 6th, keep a close eye on the system, make adjustments as needed and then implement our full marketing strategy the week of December 13th. In addition, we will make sure that MyWaco has a strong presence on the CityWaco website. As we start to collect data within the MyWaco system, our GIS and decision support department will play a major role in developing dashboards and reports for stakeholders. The focus will be to provide visibility for what's happening within MyWaco and generate reports to help our departments be successful using the MyWaco application. Our App Store, our App Store rating is something we plan to keep a close eye on. When you look at other cities that have poor App Store ratings for their resident engagement app, these ratings are directly rated at how quickly departments respond to requests. We plan to ensure that departments have access to accurate and timely reports, which will help to make data-driven decisions related to resident requests and customer service. This next slide highlights our main list of report types within the MyWaco environment. The IT department spent a lot of time researching other cities and sites to build this list. One of the most common report types had other cities and feedback from, from feedback from the CityWaco departments. After the initial release of prototype one, our MyWaco, of the MyWaco app, it was obvious that we needed to refocus our report types and directly focus on the resident and the user experience side of the MyWaco app. We changed the focus to use specific report types like pothole concerns, graffiti, vandalism and parking violations to make it easier for residents to identify specific issues, reduce the number of clicks for our residents and eliminate the frustrations of having to search for specific, the specific report types within departments. This next slide shows you our current design for the MyWaco website itself. The main, the main item highlighted here is that the user experience on the mobile app will be the exact same as the user experience on the MyWaco website. Our residents will be able to access MyWaco on an iPhone app, Android app, or by clicking on the MyWaco link on the CityWaco website. After we go live with MyWaco, we have to ensure that we continue to modernize and upgrade the MyWaco solution. The Information Technology Department will look to our user community and act on feedback to improve how we serve our user community from within the MyWaco app. Within IT, we are already discussing how to stay current with software upgrades for MyWaco and we were also requesting new feature enhancements to MyWaco based on user feedback. And lastly, we will work hard to enable one CityWaco app and one website to reduce confusion and centralize an environment for collaborative resident engagement for our community. Real quick, two folks that have done a lot of work on this. The main project manager for this project is Stephanie Jensen and I'd like her to stand. I kind of put her on the spot today. She's, she has done a tremendous amount of work on this initiative and I can't thank her enough for that. Mr. Jose Zuniga, I think we.
He's pulling double duty today, by the way. He's running the broadcast behind the scenes, so.
I know we drove him crazy with different renditions of that logo, but he did an outstanding job and, and I think we're going to be proud of how it looks once we go live. Thank you. And with that, have questions? I know a couple, just quick things. I've reached out to Mallett. We plan to go to some neighborhood association meetings, Ryan Holt and I. During the soft launch process, we'll make sure that all of you know how to get into the app, know how to submit requests. We plan to work on some videos for our residents so they know exactly how to use the system. So a lot of communication efforts to be, that are becoming forward and that'll be a big part of this is just awareness, the marketing strategy and just making sure that people know how to use this environment.
We also intend to go out and meet people where they are with QR codes and sandwich boards and, and whether that's at the farmer's market or Baylor events or, you know, events where lots of folks gather, we intend to be present so that people can just take a quick picture and download the app and, and start using it.
Along those lines of meeting people where they are, we've had a couple council members, my esteemed colleague from District 5 and myself, using Apple technology from the late Obama era with an iPhone 6 here. I didn't know if this app will be compatible with such kind of outmoded technology. A few apps are dropping off and feel like I'm at the edge of a cliff here. I didn't know if iPhone 6 would be compatible with that.
Yes, sir, that should, it should work with that and if it, if it does not, we can, we can work with you on an upgrade maybe.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Great, it means your phone.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. I, for one, am incredibly excited about this because it's something we've been talking about for a very long time. I had a couple of questions. One, on the list of, of things that the resident could click on, I saw something that said fences. What does that mean?
Fences within residential areas that might be, there might be an issue.
A downed fence or something like that?
Yes, ma'am. And so, yeah, absolutely. That was one of the report types based on some meetings with departments that we, they wanted to add.
Okay, okay. My other question is, explain to me soft launch because my, you know, I know that what we don't want to do is get too many people and we, you know, as you mentioned, you know, we're not able to support the demand immediately. We've got to pace it so we can know how we respond, what our response times look like. But tell me what, so it's a soft launch, 100 people downloading the app is a soft launch, 1,000 people, what does that mean?
We want to, we want to communicate internally first. That's our plan is to communicate within the CityWaco itself, within our departments and then neighborhood associations. I know I've got a meeting with Baylor this week as well with some student groups. And so I think that, to me, that's, that's a soft launch, not really rolling out a full marketing strategy with different media outlets and social media. But just to keep an eye on it and make sure nothing crashes and, and we're able to respond. But once we feel good about it, that first week of the 13th of December, I feel confident that we can, we can push that full marketing strategy out, let everyone in the city know that it's available and this is how to use it. I hope that answered that.
It does. I just, I know that we have some, some pretty large events at the 1st of December and I didn't know if it was something that an information booth could be set up at, not necessarily, you know, just kind of like a save the date, if you will, but give an opportunity to know what our staff has been doing such an amazing job at all this time that it is coming. So I didn't know if that was too much.
Absolutely. And I've, I've talked to Dory a little bit and with Bradley as well, and I know there's some plans to get some information out with different avenues just like that and some, some messaging boards at different events around the city as well. There's, so there's, there's talk and discussions about that already.
Well, we appreciate everything that you've done and the diligence and foresight that you all put into this because it's been very important for us to, you know, be present in the times and, you know, lots of cities use this type of technology to help, you know, people make simple requests and, and let our city know simple things. And I think that this is, it, it looks to be incredibly well-done. I'm real excited. I'm thankful for staff for their design and walking through this. Jose can't see me thanking him from behind the wall, but I am. And especially with your direction, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm thrilled that this will be available in Spanish as well. That's a huge need for our residents. I'm really excited to go on walks around the neighborhood. Whenever I go anywhere in Waco, I'm like mattress, mattress, okay, we've got some tires here, here's three loose dogs and I'm just going to be walking around on my app, on my phone that works in the year of our Lord, 2021, updating these things. Do we have some sort of, you mentioned SOPs across departments. Are all departments going to be on a similar standardized timeline? So let's say code enforcement gets pinged with something, is their response time going to be the same as public works in streets or the same as animal welfare? Like, can you talk to me a little bit more about the response time and what folks can expect once they've submitted something?
I sure can. When a resident submits a request, they'll get a, a very quick reply with a, with the standard message and that message will contain the response time within it. And so departments will be different a little bit. There's, there's some different, different types of scenarios there, but that'll be driven by an automatic response that goes out automatically quickly and that'll have that message within there.
Awesome.
And then I believe we're part of the KPI mix that, that Mike was referring to was monitoring those responses and, and also monitoring satisfaction with our responses.
I wonder if we could plan maybe in four months to have either an informal report or a work session to hear how the rollout has gone and what feedback is looking like, what the reviews in the app stores are looking like, so we can have some of that real-time data after a few months of it being out in the world.
Yeah, I think spring would be great.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm excited to get the data in the system. You know, that's, that's one thing, too. We're waiting to see what's going to, going to happen with the data part of it because there's dashboards that I'm anxious to see what they look like. And then we'll be able to do some geofencing for council districts to show you specifically what's going on in your area.
Thank you.
This is Holmes here. I'll just echo what's been said. Just going back to that one list that Andrea pulled up was talking about, just all these different things where the citizens or residents now can communicate directly. You know, a lot of times they come through us and we go, there's channels that we follow, which we'll continue to do, I'm sure, but this is direct, you're getting directly to the, the source, hopefully is where this goes. I just think the data and measurement we'll be able to get from this tool will be, you know, look at process, response time, resolution, you know, where we can make improvements in the process. I just think this is, this is really going to be helpful for the, for the city. So I appreciate your efforts on, on getting this launched. Plus, if you back up a couple more pages, you have a Gantt chart in there? Any project that has a Gantt chart is a good project, so let's, let's go on this thing.
One last thing. So I've got the current, and I'm sure most of us do, the current Recycle Waco app on my phone, which is a real help to just know what cards to put out. And I think it's got some functionality of reporting and some things kind of deep down buried in it. Will that eventually just migrate to the MyWaco or be subsumed somehow into it?
Absolutely. They, Rock Solid, who is the vendor for MyWaco, they have a, an app that will, will do exactly what the recollect app does. And so that's the long-term goal. We're still in a contract with that other app, but absolutely that's the goal is to move to one app. And we're working with Cody Patillo and, and Solid Waste and, and we want to make that smooth transition because they've had a lot of success with that app and we definitely want to, want to do that the right way.
In terms of reporting, will folks be able to drop a pin or write a specific address? Or what does that look like?
On the reporting side?
Like if there was, I'm seeing a mattress on 13th and Proctor, how do I?
There's likely a mattress at 13th and Proctor.
Exactly.
I'm guessing. Odds are.
There's different ways to get to that. You know, as, as a, you know, when, if you have the app downloaded, you can actually, actually go to, within the app, you can actually go to a map that'll show you submitted requests already. And so, you know, there's a, there's a lot of variables there, but it'll, it'll show you some existing submittals within that area. And then within the dashboard, we can absolutely see, we can geofence areas and, and look at the request within that area as well. So a couple of different ways to do that.
And the user would be able to both use their location, but also enter an address and then take a picture of the mattress and upload it with the request. So it's, it's pretty functional.
Absolutely.
But that'll be something y'all can get an early look at during the soft launch period. We'll, we'll be providing that to all iPhone users, even six. Mike, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All I'll add is I think that, you know, communicating is so important. I like that there's a compliment component to that and I just want to encourage our residents to do that. It's so easy to forget to compliment our good staff members who are so dedicated. So I love that that was at the top of the list because we do have a dedicated city staff who work so hard. So encourage residents to do that. And just echo the, the response time component. Um, and just echo the, the response time component of it, the importance of setting expectations, I think is so critical. Um, and, uh, uh, look forward to tracking that and making sure that we are actually getting back to our residents, so thanks for this. It's gonna be great.
Thank y'all.
And, uh, at this point, I wanted to offer a break to our, um, team. Everybody want to keep going or take a break? What do y'all think, man? Everybody good to keep going? A break? All right, let's keep moving. Why do you make the face? You, you always introduce-
Face or was that I want a break face? Okay, we had a break face on the end over here.
Oh, we can take a break. Let's break.
Take a ten-minute break.
Let's take a ten-minute break.
We'll be back at four forty.
Are you waiting on me, Mayor?
I am.
I apologize. Jennifer was distracting me.
Uh, we, next up, um, we're joined at the table by, uh, members of our Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce Leadership Team. I'm excited for them to present the, um, Proposed Talent Remote Work Initiative in Waco, as you're seeing on the screen. I think Chris Collins is going to lead most of this conversation. She's the Executive Vice President, but I also see Matt Matters and, um, Jennifer Branch at the table, so looking forward to hearing from them. As Chris and the council knows, talent is one of the most critical pieces to economic development these days, to both recruit businesses and retain them. So, I'm excited to hear from the chamber and, and this new initiative that they've cooked up to support our local economy, and I want to commend them for, for trying something new. I think that's, uh, what we're all about here at the city and at the Chamber of Commerce, and look forward to hearing more about it today. Matt, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, thank you, Bradley. I appreciate it. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for having us today. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to present to you, um, some information regarding a new initiative that we think, um, is going to be beneficial to our community, and we're excited to, to share more information with you today. Um, Councilwoman Rodriguez, let me start off by saying hello to you. It's been a long time since I've seen you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, what I thought we would do today is, um, have Chris Collins set the table and just talk to y'all a little bit briefly, um, about the Talent Workforce Imperative, and then we'll walk you through a quick, um, PowerPoint presentation. Um, I will tell you that Chris and Jennifer Branch, who leads our Talent Workforce Body of Work and Initiatives in the, at the chamber, and many of the chamber's professional team members have been very, very involved in the, in the development of this initiative over the past, literally over the past five or six months. Um, we've done extensive research, and we've looked out, uh, to see what's happening in the national marketplace. We've looked for best practices, and, and we've really done a due diligence. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and I'll, her set the table, then we'll walk you through the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Matt. Mayor, council, thank you very much for the, uh, allowing us to be here today. We, uh, we're honored to be able to present this to you. Um, through our economic development work, we know that, um, we've, we've done a fairly good job of, of growing, uh, labor force in our, in our marketplace and creating new workplace opportunities for, for our citizens. Uh, throughout the last eighteen to twenty-four months, we, you know, COVID has definitely had an impact on the community, uh, but we have been the first community in the state of Texas, the first, uh, MSA to reach full pre-COVID recovery from a labor force perspective, and I think that goes to the great work that we've done in, uh, the great leadership that we've done, that we've had with, uh, within our community leaders, uh, to really keep the, the economy moving forward. But what's happening now is that, um, employers didn't necessarily see the significant job losses within their existing facilities, but they have seen an increased volume in work and, and as a result, they're doing more and more hiring. Um, individuals that were displaced throughout COVID took advantage of the opportunities that were presented before them. Um, perhaps they couldn't return into the hospitality industry for quite some period of time and took that opportunity to retrain and move into other jobs. But what that's done is it's created a, um, a challenge for employers because so many of them are hiring all at once, that we're not able to, we've, we've absorbed the labor force, and now there's a need for more. So, what we're talking about today is the opportunity to help recruit individuals into the community that aren't here to help fill jobs that are available, but these are also jobs that are harder to fill because they are a specific skill set that may not be available within the labor force, uh, of existing folks. So, um, that's what we want to talk with you about today is the, uh, the In Waco Talent Recruitment Campaign that we've put together to help satisfy the needs of our existing employers.
Chris, thank you. So, if you look at the first slide in your PowerPoint, um, there are three boxes in front of you. Um, what Chris just shared with you and what we're going to talk about today is the first box, a talent recruitment of experienced talent into our mar, into our marketplace. Um, we are doing a good job, I believe, as a community, in terms of retaining our talent. We're doing a good job in terms of upskilling people, reskilling people, and being sensitive and thoughtful in those areas, and we have to be. Those are the people who live here, those are friends, our family members, our fellow citizens. Um, another component in terms of this sort of broad approach that we're undertaking in terms of bringing talent in and retaining talent and so forth is a remote workers piece. We're looking at that, it's moving down the court as well. Um, we'll be looking forward to talking to y'all about that in the not-too-distant future, but today we wanted to focus our conversations on the In Waco Digital Talent Recruitment Initiative. And so, if you look at the next slide, you'll see, um, some images, and these are images of our In Waco website. And you'll see that, you know, on the left-hand side, you can find a new you in Waco. There's thought behind the In Waco, um, brand, if you will. You can put your word in front of that. You can live in Waco, you can prosper in Waco, you can work in Waco, and so forth. And so, that was the thinking behind the development and the branding with In Waco. Um, again, you can, you can find a job in Waco, you can find a new you in Waco, you can make a living in Waco, et cetera, you can live and learn in Waco. And so, we wanted you to get a little bit of a feel for the fabric of the In Waco website. Let me just simply say that the In Waco website is going to be central to this whole initiative because everything we're going to talk about here in the next minute or two, all of the individuals that we identify, all the individuals we're trying to get connected with and bring into our community and get connected with our employers, we hope to drive them into the In Waco website, and there's a lot of reasons for that, now the least of which is, it's going to tell a compelling story about our community and the quality of life here. It's also going to be the host to, um, job postings by our employers, and it's going to be a place where people who are seeking work can go and post, um, resumes. So, it's going to be the central hub, if you will, of this whole initiative. Next slide. Next slide is just more of a visual related to the In Waco website. On the left-hand side in front of you, you'll see that there's plenty to do in Waco, right? Once an individual arrives at that website, they can see the dynamism of our community, they can see the nice quality of life that we offer, the ver, the livability that we all enjoy, um, here in our community. There's food and drink, the great outdoors, music and arts. Um, the center build-out is designed to show you a little bit more specificity, if you will, as it relates to work in Waco, and in that particular section, you'll see a bit of a focus on advanced manufacturing. You'll see internships, you'll see startups and entrepreneurship, so it's, again, it's a dynamic website. On the right-hand side, aviation, aerospace, aerospace and defense, the healthcare technology, professional and financial services. These are aligned with the industries that we have through our economic development strategic plan in terms of targeted industry sectors. Important to note, in that information that's in front of you, if you look at the bottom, you'll see where it says L3 Harris and SpaceX and Caterpillar, and there's a little squiggly line, and it goes over and it shows L3 Harris, SpaceX, and Caterpillar. That's for illustration purposes, and we're going to talk a little bit more about the opportunity that we're going to present to the private sector, to also to be an active partner and a funder in this initiative, and we'll talk about that just, in just a couple of minutes. Um, on this slide, this gives you a snapshot of the In Waco Digital Talent Recruitment Campaign. This is the crux of it. So, you'll see that there's data mining involved, there's the development of creative, there's the placement of creative, there's measurement, and then there's administration of this whole initiative and, and the effectiveness of the initiative. Data mining is looking at finding the individuals that we're going after based on characteristics and how to best reach them. The creative is designing ads and marketing pieces that we can then place in front of those individuals that will resonate with them and will get them to move to action. Placement, that's all strategic, and we're working with a couple of companies that are going to help guide, um, that activity and, and those targets and that body of work. And these, these companies have a strong history of being active in that space. Measurement, we have to know if we're successful. You know, those folks in the private sector who decided to come up alongside us and helped finance this initiative, you folks, should you make a decision today to also be an active investor? The county, which just this morning made a decision to be an active investor, we have to be able to measure what's happening, and we have to be able to report back to you, to the leadership of our organization, and also to the broader business community about how effective, um, the In Waco Digital Talent Recruitment Campaign or Initiative is. And then administration, and administration is extremely important. As we've gone through this whole process, and we've learned together, and we've constructed this initiative, one of the things that we've heard with some consistency is, if you go through this whole process of data mining, creative, and placement, and, and, you know, measuring the activity, the folks who are visiting your website and so forth, you've got to have this concierge service, this last mile piece of it, where when people, when we know who those individuals are, when they've done a form fill on our website, or they've responded to a drip campaign, through an email campaign that we've put in place, that we're able to touch them, we're able to reach out, we are able to understand who they are and what their needs are, and communicate with them individual to individual. That concierge service is huge. Next slide. This is designed to give you migraine headache. Sorry about that. Um, if you, if you look at this, this is designed to give you a twelve-month snapshot of what this campaign or this initiative is going to look like and feel like. You go across the top, and it, obviously, there's twelve months there, right? Your first four boxes at the top, they all say quality of life. We have to have a robust quality of life messaging campaign that complements the campaign and the communication that we're going to use, that's going to be specific to the individuals that we're targeting to try to bring into our community. And that's going to be a really nice thing because it's going to complement our ability to recruit them, and any spillage that we may get from the marketing and communications is going to tell a nice story about our community. We're going to be as targeted as we possibly can, but that whole conversation and presentation about quality of life is extremely important component in terms of that decision-making process that our targeted individuals are going to go through. The bottom three sections are designed to show you the targets that we've identified as a first out. I think it's important to understand that we intend to be very flexible as we go through this process with this initiative. We're going to be learning. We've never done this before, and to be very frank, I'm not sure that there are any other organizations like ours around the country that have ever done this before. I, I could be wrong, could be proven wrong. Um, but we could very well be, um, one of the first out in terms of doing this, so we're going to learn, and we're going to be willing to be flexible as we start to identify how well this campaign is unfolding and how well people are responding to it, but we're looking at engineers and industrial technicians and allied health workers. And if you look at those three sec, those three sectors, you get, um, occupation codes, and we were able to distill down within those sectors, the occupation codes that make the most sense in terms of our employers and what their needs are with engineers and industrial technicians, and then on the allied, allied health side. Next slide, please. This is designed to soften that migraine just a little bit. This is a one-month look at the campaign. So, a lot of quality of life placement on the left-hand side. In this particular illustration, we're looking at engineers. Um, on the right-hand side, some more quality of life engineers, and then, a few minutes ago, I talked about the opportunity for the private sector to come up alongside with us and help us with this. You'll see investor, investor-sponsored content. And so, it's our hope that we have a number of companies that say, we too want to help you with this, and if you look down on the bottom right-hand side, should they opt to do that, this is what we're offering them as investors, um, related to their investor-sponsored content. So, they'll get a logo and a link, um, on our, on the In Waco, um, website. They're going to have their company logos on some of the digital ads that are going to be going out and being placed in front of these individuals that we've identified as our targets. So, they're going to, there's going to be a return on that investment, and I think it's important to understand that with these companies who are alongside us and are part of this investor-sponsored content, when their ads appear and somebody clicks on it, there's going to be a customized landing page, if you will, for that company. So, if you look at the next page, it illustrates that, I think, I'm sorry, it, we pulled that up, okay, I apologize. So, there will be a customized webpage for, as an example, let's just say Company X, that you'll land on that page, and there will be information on Company X. It's embedded in and is part of the In Waco website. It'll be easy to transit through that and get into the In Waco website more fully to navigate to that website. That website will be woven into the chamber website, it'll be very dynamic, but those are some of the things that we're offering those potential investors related to sponsored content. Chris, next slide, please. So, this next slide is designed to show you this initiative and the costs associated, associated with the initiative. So, again, we talked about data mining, we talked about the development of creative, we've talked about strategic placement, we've talked about measuring the impact of the initiative, and we've talked about administration, and we think the cost is going to be somewhere in the two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars per year range to be able to do that. A big piece of that is going to be the creative development, the placement, the working with the companies that we've identified to come up alongside us, and then the administrative costs related to some of the concierge services and the body of work in order to make this happen. We're looking at, hopefully garnering fifty thousand dollars from the private sector. Yesterday, we had a briefing, we had eight companies, is that accurate? We had eight companies join us, and it was very well-received. I have a, you know, a high degree of confidence that we'll have a number of those companies come up alongside us in pretty short order to participate. So, we were briefing the private sector yesterday, those briefings will continue. We're hoping to garner fifty thousand dollars from the private sector. We're asking you folks today to give consideration to investing fifty thousand dollars to be an active investor with us on this initiative. And again, this morning, we had a conversation with the county, and we asked the county to also be an investor at the level of fifty thousand dollars, and we're very thankful to the county and the county's leadership, they agreed to do that. Um, and then the chamber and administrative costs are going to be around seventy thousand dollars. So, for a total cost of about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. It's important, and I'm going to close, it's important that this last mile that we talked about, these administrative costs for program administration, system maintenance, and the personalized outreach, it is super important that we have that as a component of this, that last mile piece. We've been told time and again, don't let that fall to the wayside because that's where oftentimes, you, you go through all this work and then without the personal touch, you lose those opportunities. So, we want to have a really robust concierge relationship management component to all of this. Any questions? Ladies, what did I miss? Anything you want to add? Can I ask, uh, what an allied health worker is, or what that, what that includes, I guess, just to get a sense of who we're trying to attract?
Uh, so when you look at the allied health professions, these are, um, beyond doctors, these are nurses, these are RNs and LVNs, uh, these are technicians, so radiology technicians, thinking about the people that are, that are working behind the scenes, um, within, within our healthcare professions, uh, and that is where, um, we've, here from our hospitals and from our, um, other, um, medical providers, that they need some help in attracting some of those folks to our marketplace.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions for y'all. Thank you for this presentation. It's exciting to think how we take advantage of this moment that we're in and as the way that we think about work is shifting, taking advantage of being in the thick of this. A couple of thoughts for y'all. Um, in terms of the quality of life, what is the kind of group that's going to inform this? Are you going to be working with Creative Waco and the other chambers to speak into some of the elements of what make Waco great, or how do you anticipate sourcing that information?
I think, you know, as, as an organization that hosts a number of people from outside the world, the world, uh, we, we probably have a pretty good idea of what that looks like, but also, when you think about, um, we're working directly with employers that are actively recruiting, and understanding the messages that are resonating with their candidates will also help inform that. I think, you know, we also want to be cognizant of, um, being, um, clear about what all is within the community and the different voices that we're trying to make sure that we're representing in that. Uh, and so, um, it, it wouldn't surprise me for us to, to ask for input from, from our partners in that conversation as well, uh, just to make sure that we're, that we're hitting all of the different areas that we should be.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
So the methodology behind the website was, so if you go to like the fourth page, I believe, and you look across the top, live, work, play, learn, jobs. If you click on that live section, it's going to have food and drink. It's going to have the great outdoors, music, music and arts. It wasn't our intention to recreate, but there's a lot of redirects. So there's also a community calendar on there that redirects to an already existing community calendar. And so it was, it was intended to pull in a lot of those other elements and a lot of the other organizations that are, that are already doing stuff. We just want to redirect to those sites. And with the, with the thought in mind, if, if you were a professional in another community and somehow you ended up in one of our drip campaigns because you're a robotics engineer and that's a high need or something, you end up in a drip campaign, you happen to click and then you can start to see, there's a whole section on there that has neighborhoods on there and, you know, our different higher ed institutions and things like that. So it's, it's pretty inclusive and encompassing and a lot of redirects to already existing Creative Waco and things like that.
That is, oh, no.
I was just going to say, one of the things that we hear from human resource professionals that are actively recruiting is that there's not a centralized place within the community where they can send their candidates to look and really see what, what this community is all about. And so they'll have to send them to half a dozen different locations to gather that information. And this is meant to be a centralized resource, not just for the people that we're trying to attract here through the marketing campaign, but for our human resource professionals and others to use as they're trying to showcase all the things that our community has to offer.
That's awesome. I love that. I was talking to, I was at a church Thanksgiving meal this past weekend and I was talking to a couple Baylor students. They're like, should I stay in Waco? Should I not? And I was like, oh, let me tell you all the reasons you should stay in Waco. So I love the idea of even getting to use this for students that are, consider themselves visitors in our community to hopefully entice them. Our council, as y'all know, is deeply committed to the work of diversity, equity and inclusion. And so would love, and hearing that word inclusion, just want to be very cognizant that we, the photos like you already have are showing a diverse array of body types and skin colors and ages, so folks from all over the country see themselves reflected on this website and then can see themselves reflected in Waco and can see that comfort and transferability.
Exactly. I will add that we have two partners that was briefly mentioned that we're going to work with to help us with the messaging and, and the placement of these ads. And they're very committed also, if, you know, if, again, I'll go back to that robotics engineer, if that's what it is. The image that may come across, if you're a robotics engineer on your screen or what might pop up on your Facebook, might be the picture of, I don't know, a rocket or something like that to get you excited and to get you to want to click on it. But they're going to help us. We have two different partners and they're going to help us make sure that those, that creative is spot on and targeting who, who we're trying to talk to, who we're trying to get in front of.
Awesome.
Holmes over here. A great presentation, Matt and Chris and Jennifer. Thanks. Yeah, I think this is, and I didn't know, Chris, the news on we're the first post-COVID to get to a full recovery at Waco. That's, I mean, that's fantastic. And it's, it's believable because everything great that's happened in the last 18 months on, on business coming to Waco. And this is a very timely effort and initiative because you, you guys, and we've all done more bringing businesses to Waco, reasoning to make sure we have workers to work at these businesses that are coming to Waco so we can continue to, or we can prove to these guys that there's a workforce here that this is successful enterprise on coming to Waco and a fruitful enterprise. And we've got to make sure that, that that happens. So I like the, and it's targeted here with engineers, industrial techs and allied health. And you guys have put some thought into it. I love the, I love the approach. Do you think the, are we getting in conflict with like employment agencies or maybe if you put, the services already out there that, are we being conflicted here or collaborative or? This does seem to be a more proactive holistic approach to it, but I know that employment agencies do some of this work, right? Or this is kind of a, this is a more of a specialized effort, I guess.
Way in ladies. My, my instincts tell me, and I don't understand that industry as deeply as perhaps I should. So there's some, there's some risk in me answering that question. So generally speaking, I think your employment agencies are looking at working with your existing workforce in your backyard or in your particular region and connecting them with your employers. Beyond that, Councilman Holmes, I think, you know, we're talking about talent recruiters and there may be a little bit of competition with talent recruiters who have a more global scope or national scope in terms of identifying talent and bringing it in. But here's the reality. The reality is, is that just yesterday, as I mentioned, we met with a number of companies. And we also hear this on a regular basis. Jennifer leads our business retention expansion work. Jennifer and Chris and I and other members of our team, many of you folks, and we're very active in the space of interfacing with our, our companies out there. And our companies are begging for people. The last thing that we would want to do is create an initiative that competes with our existing workers. That would be so illogical for an economic development and Chamber of Commerce to do that. But we're talking about real issues out there and real challenges. And the concern or the risk that we have is that we wake up and we realize that some of these companies aren't able to expand or we lose an opportunity to bring a company in because we just simply don't have the critical mass of workers or the type of workers that we need to be able to make that happen. We're not talking about 10 people. We're not talking about a company saying, we need 10 people. We're talking about some of our major employers saying, we need 100 people or 200 people. And that's a major challenge for us that we've got to get on top of. And as I mentioned to you a few minutes ago, we, we may be learning, we are going to learn. All of us are going to learn about this together and we're hopeful. It's my great hope that it's so active that we have to hire a person to deal with the concierge aspect. But right now where we are, and it's not just us, I mean, this, this is a national imperative, but it's for Texans in particular, it's a great challenge. Right now, we have got to, we have got to look at this from no stone unturned in every approach, every approach, including the remote workers component, including everything that we're doing as a community to upskill and retrain, all of that. It's got to be holistic.
Agreed. And yeah, I'm supportive of what we're doing here. Very directed and intentional and I hope, I hope it takes off. We need the, we need folks in Waco for sure.
Thank you all for the presentation. Just a couple of, of questions on the, the mad crazy calendar. We started in January. We're at November, so I assume that the timeline is like yesterday. So you got your agreement from the county this morning. You're waiting on us. The other piece with the private sector, are you anticipating that their buy-in will be in that, fall in that same timeline? I know you said, you know, y'all were in the room and we are confident, but you know, I just wanted to see if then, you know, what are the if thens in that statement?
So our plan is for an early January launch, get through the holidays and then when people are paying attention again to other things than, you know, their phones, then, then it'll be the right time for that. As far as the employer side of it, we feel very, very confident that, that we are going to have the support of the business community. Just the feedback that we've gotten from the seven or eight employers that we met with yesterday, a high likelihood that, that we're going to have that level of investment. We're, we're ready to go. The website is ready. The creative is underway and we've given those employers understanding that we need a little bit of time to incorporate their sponsored content into it. We've given them a December 15 deadline to let us know.
Okay. That's helpful. I mean, it would behoove them to get on board because this is for them. I mean, yes, it's Waco all, you know, but, you know, in order for you to make your, the, the cogs in the wheel turn, you've got to have the people. So it, it would be beneficial for them. Just curious, and I know that they have a different seat in this position, but are the colleges and universities that we have in the community involved in this process at all? I mean, I don't know if it's feeding the machine or if it's, you know, because so, for instance, TSTC, you know, has a guaranteed placement thing in their, their tuition. Are they involved in this, in this project?
Well, I can tell you that I have asked Jeremy Vickers from Baylor University to provide the Chamber Board with a briefing tomorrow on the remote worker aspect of it. And so we're working, we're constructing that component of it as well, sort of as we speak. So the answer, the short answer is yes. Yeah.
Also, I think that it's fair to say that those students are going to potentially fall into our drip campaigns and part of our targets so that they can see all these great aspects about Waco. So I would hope, I mean, I, you know, we want, we want the, the retention of those students. We definitely want those TSCC students to know what all opportunities are here, so.
And as Councilmember Palmer mentioned, the Baylor students that are wondering whether and what their next steps are, if this would be beneficial to them. You mentioned the collaborative work and the quality of life and I assume that those, like in the work in Waco page or category, that the startup and entrepreneurship will also drive to the resources that we are currently supporting and partnered with so that people become aware that I may be a robotics engineer, but you know, I have a, I wrap gifts on the side, you know, there's, there's a way for them to, to feed all of the parts of their, their whole being.
So that page, the startup and entrepreneurship side, that'll link directly to Startup Waco. And we know that that's an organization that connects. So the, the whole idea is that, as Jennifer said, we don't want to reinvent the wheel of resources, but creating a centralized place that directs people to those resources makes it better for us and makes it better for our partners and the better experience for those that visit the site too.
Sure. Thank you.
Matt, there is a institute a block up from my house. I know a lot of our kids from university high school have gone over to this career institute. There are health, educational, I know a couple of my friends have graduated as nurses assistants, but they're going to continue with RNs and, and the rest of that. But that, I don't know if y'all are aware of that institute, if you have reached out to that. And the only reason I'm bringing it forward is because I know a lot of our kids from university high school, because it's so close to university high school, they just automatically go there. So I'm just wondering if you have reached out to this institute as well to make the graduates there know that they have a place to come to put their, their qualifications in and where to go and how to go and all of that as well.
Yes, ma'am. So you're talking about the Southern Careers Institute.
Yes. I didn't want to say the name, but I guess it's okay.
It's okay. I mean, they're, they're, they are a education and training resource within the community. And I think, you know, that, that's a good thing for us to have a breadth of, of resources. Jennifer has a great relationship with them. Jennifer, I'm going to talk about the work that y'all do together.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, actively work with them and make sure that their students are, or they have a line of communication with our employers. So, and that's kind of what I do on the business retention visits is if I'm visiting with somebody, you know, an employer in the healthcare field, make sure that they know you have all these different points of talent and access to these different talent pools and that's just, that's just one of them. So again, if they're getting those, if they're getting those credentials and the certifications and, you know, that, that particular week of the month of that big migraine is allied health directed, then they could very potentially be part of that drip campaign and they can see what all opportunities are here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that, Matt. Thank you, please.
I think that we have an unprecedented number of jobs coming into our market and most all of them are at this livable to excellent wage mark. And that's exciting. And I just want to congratulate your team. I want to congratulate our economic development partners. And I want to congratulate our city staff and our community for that data point. But in realizing that, it is, action is required. And our priority will always be, as you said, Matt, to our people here, our workforce here. And I think that, you know, getting an update and briefing probably to this council and our community on a lot of the strategic work that's being done with our community economic development partners on that, whether that be upskill Waco, whether that be some of the conversations that TSTC is bringing to the community about how to partner well, upskilling our own workforce into jobs that pay good wages is always going to be, I think, where our heart is beating first and foremost. But I think that I, as I look at the challenges in the community right now, I think housing, I think workforce are two of the top of the list. And so taking a strategic, to build out a diversified, healthy economy, we're going to have to apply strategy like this. And so I'm incredibly supportive of kind of bringing all of our tools to the toolkit, to, to the, to the toolkit and saying, yeah, we're going to build up our workforce, but we're also to really achieve the rounded out economy that we want, we're probably going to have to look at some efforts to retain and to seek out our workforce. And I believe that through this, we're going to see a holistic, diversified economy where every member of our community has an opportunity to win and have financial security and achieve their economic goals. And I think that's what this council is excited to, to get behind, is building out that kind of economy. And I think this is one step to achieve that. So I'm supportive of it and really excited to see us move forward with it.
Matt, thank you for this. And our next step here is along with supporting you on this is affordable housing for these people that are going to be working and get them a place, a nice, safe place to live. And that's, that's our, that's our job to make sure that we have affordable housing out in our community in place for our workers to go into.
That's great. It's critically important.
Which ties into, I think, future agenda item probably, but a housing study's going to be coming out soon. So we can anticipate that, which will tie into building out a future economy, our, our economy in the future, so. Great. Thanks, guys. Anything else for the team? Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you.
Mayor, would it be inappropriate to ask if the council's willing to provide the financial assistance?
Not, not inappropriate at all. I think that that's, I, I think you've heard support for this, some feedback and some support. I'm assuming that we'll have to come back with a future agenda item on.
Yeah, we'll have an, either, we'll have a future agenda item on it in December.
And I don't want to speak for anybody too. I don't want to get ahead of myself there, so.
Very good. We sure appreciate you folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. I'm going to, we're a little behind schedule, but I'm going to go ahead because Mallette's been patient. We're going to go ahead and do the discussion of the neighborhood grant program. And Mallette, if you'll come on up, for those who don't know, she's our Director of Neighborhood Engagement. I also spy in the next to last row, Rolando Rodriguez, in the audience, who serves as an excellent staffer in Mallette's office. I'm always excited to bring Mallette to the work sessions because it means we could talk about neighborhoods, which is not our biggest line item in the budget, but a really important piece of the city family because it really is a force multiplier for all of our departments and doing a great job communicating our programs and efforts. And today, she's going to provide an overview of the, the neighborhood grant program, which the council funded for the first time last year. So, Mallette, you got it.
All right. Thank you. I will try to go quickly as I can. As Bradley said, I am here today to talk to you about the neighborhood grant program. Just as a quick review, this is a brand new program. This was our first year. And while it was allocated with the fiscal year, we didn't actually, weren't able to launch the grant program until April of 2021, after having brought it to council in March, made a few tweaks, and then we got ready to hit the road. But I will go over all the grants that were awarded during 2021's grant cycle, review some additional projects we were able to accomplish. The 2022 grant program is open. We are open for applications for the upcoming year, so I'll mention a little bit about that. And just a quick overview of just the basics of how the grant program works for anybody out there who is interested. So we had five neighborhood associations this past year that were applied for and were awarded grants. Austin Avenue, Alta Vista, Brook Oaks, Northeast Riverside and Sanger Heights. Austin Avenue sought a grant for their Fourth of July parade, which is, was a total project cost of about $3,300. They specifically asked for a grant amount of $2,425 to cover their traffic control equipment that's needed for all the street closures needed for a block party, I mean, excuse me, the, the, to close all the blocks for the parade route. There is a 25% match on their part of the neighborhood association for a grant like this. They were able to meet that easily with their volunteer time, needed to plan the event, man the event with, at the barricades and whatnot, and then also the, the cost of the event insurance. Just a couple of pictures, but you'll notice the top right, it was pouring rain at their planned start time of 10:00 AM on July 4th. But they gave it an hour, the rain blew through and you see their, the two photos on, on the left and may have been recognized a few people, that they were able to complete the event on July 4th. We have received their final report, the payment was made. And so that, we'll move on to the next one, which is Alta Vista. Alta Vista created a new event. So they had, for the first time, what they called a community gathering event, which was really focused for them on neighborhood association identity awareness, but also membership recruitment. They had a total project budget that was estimated about $1,780. They requested a grant amount of about $1,000, which specifically helped them cover the cost of food, bounce house rentals, mother rentals and supplies. This also required a match, which they were also very able to meet with their volunteer time to plan the event and, and staff the event. The project was completed in August of this year. We have just recently received their final report and the payment is in process, but they are, they were very happy with the event. Brook Oaks Neighborhood chose to apply for a neighborhood grant for their neighborhood association to update their logo and update their. to update their logo and update their signs for their neighborhood area. So you'll see there at the bottom of the slide, the picture of the old sign, um, which was created back in the 90s. And so they worked with local sign company, several, they got bids from several on a new design, um, but ended up choosing one. So the total project amount on this was $1,0650. The total grant amount was also $1,0650 because for this type of project, there's not a match required. It's a public improvement that becomes the property of the city, the street in the right of way, a sign in the right of way. So no, no match was required for this, but they did, do have a nice new logo. You'll see some members of the, uh, neighborhood association there. That's a new, one of the new signs. It's on Sixth Street, just off Waco Drive. I will say, this project is almost complete. It's complete enough for us to get the final report from the neighborhood association. The signs are installed by our Public Works Department, so that's an end kind that doesn't affect the bottom line of the project cost. Public Works graciously, uh, puts up the signs for them. All the signs that had existing poles have been installed. There are a few additional poles that are going to be installed for new sign locations that they've requested. Those are in process, but we are, we're almost done with this one. And the neighborhood's very happy with their new signs. So Northeast Riverside, um, chose to seek park benches with their neighborhood grants. They actually have two parks within their boundary, Wilbert Austin Senior Park and Brooklyn Park. So they chose to do a park bench at each one. Our Parks and Rec department has actually a memorial bench program now. So we, we proceeded through that process with them. Were able to get a, a park bench that has to go on a new concrete pad and then a dedication plaque there that you see that says, "Made possible by Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association, funded by City of Waco 2120, 2021 City of Waco Neighborhood Grant Program." So everybody gets, uh, uh, credit there. And I would mention that the ones who have events on their advertisements for their events, it says, "Supported by or funded by City of Waco Grant Program." So if we're funding something, they're giving us a nod to that. But I will say, same thing, no match required for this. It's a public improvement, remains a, a public improvement in the park that Parks will maintain. But we got a bench at each one of their parks. They have been installed. You see members of the neighborhood association there. That's at Wilbert Austin Park, the other bench shown there at, at Brooklyn. And so this project is now completed. We have gotten the final report and all payments have been completed. Should note, in Brook Oaks and in this case, payments were made directly to the sign company, directly to the bench company, directly to the plaque. So these neighborhoods didn't have to float that cost. We're able to work directly with the vendor. Sanger Heights Neighborhood Association, uh, applied for a grant to help with their Halloween on Colcord event. Total project cost was estimated at around $6,100. They requested a grant of up to $4,000 to help them with the cost of the traffic control equipment to close the streets, closed Colcord from 21st to 25th Street. Also security, uh, food activities and some supplies. That's sort of the center of the activity is that top left photo, uh, which is the Good Neighbor House at like 23rd and Colcord, I believe. But great activity up and down the street, lots of houses decorated, lots, lots of people decorated, uh, with great costumes. But just, I think, a well-attended event that the neighborhood was very happy with. Although they just completed it a couple of weeks ago, obviously on Halloween. We do have their final report and are processing their payment as well. And I think they, they even indicated their intention to possibly apply for this same type of grant for next year's upcoming round. So I know several of you have already done the math. And we had $100,000, right? And the neighborhood applications that we had in this initial year, which was quick, and, and, and we tried to go quickly with them and help them. But we only had $14,000 in funding that are a little over, that was given to grants to the neighborhood projects. So that left us a remaining $85,000 plus. So we talked it over and the city manager gave us the opportunity to use the remainder of those funds so long as it benefited neighborhoods. So we chose two avenues there. One, to do a marketing campaign to bring awareness to all the neighborhood associations, uh, kind of throughout the community. And we chose $15,000 for it, which we, uh, were able to accomplish. And then the remainder, uh, we talked to Parks and Rec and said, okay, what can we do? Where can we go that will, will make a difference with this funding? So the marketing campaign, um, really was multimedia, uh, attempt to do a campaign across the community, several different outlets, several different, uh, types of media. But we chose just a very simple, what we thought would resonate with a lot of folks, a Mr. Rogers theme, "Won't You Be Our Neighbor?" Uh, with, you know, just easy ways to know that we, Neighbor, Office of Neighborhood Engagement exists, but all the neighborhood associations exist, and here's an easy way to find out which neighborhood is yours and how to get involved. So, like I said, multimedia, so we had radio, TV and print ads, um, several different types of print. We also had a great social media campaign, which could not have done at all without, well, Rolando probably could have. But I could not have done at all without our great folks in Municipal Information Department. Once again, Jose for the ad designs for, uh, a lot of the print ads. Thank you to them for boosting all our social media. We got over 20,000, uh, views on Facebook, a lot of great comments. So we're very helpful, uh, very happy with that result. I will also, uh, share with you, we had Spanish language ads on the La Le Radio Station. We also had English-Spanish in print in a few places, specifically this insert that went into our City Limits Water Bill Newsletter. So just, it was just front and back, the English and Spanish versions of the messaging. And we also have, uh, ads that are in the buses now, that, um, our, all of our city buses that are basically the same ad in English and Spanish with that QR code so people can find out quickly like what their neighborhood is and how to get involved. So if you ride the bus or you're on a game day shuttle, tell me if you see it. They're, they're just, those recently got up, so, uh, we're still stretching this campaign out as, as best we can. So that used the $15,000 for the marketing campaign. We had park projects that we looked at parks to say, okay, what can we do? What do you have? Some small projects out there, because you know, we know they have big projects too, but some things that we could accomplish. And, uh, we ended up with refurbishment of the pavilion at Oscar Duconje Park and some renovations to the Eastern Little League bathrooms and Eastern Little League parking lot area driveway. And I'll tell you what led us there, uh, initially to Eastern Little League is Carver Neighborhood Association was really interested in applying for a neighborhood grant to attempt to do some renovations of the bathroom. But it wasn't a big enough amount to accomplish it. So that's what led us there to, to, uh, in the, in the beginning, uh, to even talk about Eastern Little League. But we were able to accomplish, um, these projects. And also, uh, Parks helped us bid them out. Thank you very much, Parks and Rec. They were wonderful in helping us bid the projects, manage the projects. There was a little bit of an overrun for what we had left to work with and Parks picked it up. Their project, so yeah. But, um, Oscar Duconje Park Pavilion, just a couple of before and after pictures. There was $12,900 roughly spent here. And I'll, if you should, look at the before and after of the ceiling, the wood was in great shape. It was, it was hanging in there doing great. But we did have, cleaning and repainting of all the, uh, underneath the ceiling there and the metal structure, repainting of all the structure there. Probably the more, uh, differential or ooh and ah, the before and after are the actual, is the cleaning of the, of the pavilion slab and the cleaning of the picnic tables and then repainting of them. Much more inviting right now, but you can tell this is a well-loved, well-used park for sure. Then the Eastern Little League bathrooms that I mentioned. It was about $9,000, almost $10,000, $9,948, um, for the project to renovate the Little League bathrooms there at Eastern. A variety of different things were done, um, including some new bathroom fixtures, new stall doors and the door frames that support those, hot water to both bathrooms, plus paint throughout the interior and, and some new LED lighting. There's an after picture of what is still in progress, but the new, the whole interior has been painted. The new stalls, doors and store, door frames are up, the new lighting. We are waiting the sinks arrival. It will be installed. And, uh, that should be probably wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. And then by far the largest project that we took on was the parking lot space, the driveway space into the Eastern Little League fields. If you're not familiar, there's a very long driveway that goes back in there. So that's the beginning of it. You see on the right picture there, there's the entrance off of JJ Fluel and into the fields. And then this is just a partial view of the parking lot area. So the scope of the project was to take that parking lot area, create some new bollards to define the parking area space a little bit better. A lot of new recycled materials being laid on the parking space, parking lot area. And will also, it's not shown here yet, but it will also be laid on the driveway all the way back down to the, the new drive approach. New concrete dumpster pad there with the bollards, that's that top right photo. And then a new drive approach off of JJ Fluel, now that is concrete. It was a little wonky before. It'll be great now. And something that wasn't part of this, uh, project, but is worth a tip of the hat too, is the new sign that Parks and Rec put up there. So that's that bottom middle photo. Once again, just thank you to them for, for helping us through these projects and helping get them done. Also, Jim Reed and Streets was very helpful with the, with the parking lot and driveway piece. Want to mention just the upcoming new grant cycle. So we are, as I've mentioned, open for business with application for the 2022 grant program. Council approved the minor tweaks to the policy we needed to make on October 19th. We had it up and running the next day. The biggest way for us to launch that is information directly to all the neighborhood associations that we communicate with. And then specifically on October 28th, we had our Neighborhood Leader Network Meeting, which is a group of, uh, we allow up to four of the neighborhood leaders from each neighborhood association to come. And we have just a group meeting, one specifically for networking, but two, to cover the topics of their choice. So what do they want to hear about? Is there a particular speaker or what do they want to do? And overwhelmingly, the topic for this one was just neighborhood grant. Let's talk about it, go, go over it, go. So we talked about the application process, um, just a whole lot of question and answer. And more importantly, I think, to, to drive home the, the complete understanding that we're here to help them. Where it's not a, we won't look at your application, we won't answer a question until you submit it. We are here to answer questions before that process. So we have met with committees, grant committees. We have just answered little simple calls and we will be available to do that for anybody who's interested in finding out what project ideas they have. I will say, the, the hardest thing for most of the neighborhoods is to think of a project that falls within that $7,500. They can think of really big projects that we would all like to see done, but the keeping it in the small project venue. As you know, we overwhelmingly heard give us more time, uh, to do the application process. So we gave them three months, a little over three months this time, instead of that quick six-week window that we had in the initial one, trying to get it up and off the ground. So Jan-, uh, January 26th is the deadline for applications, but we will take them sooner if they're ready. And then, so we'll have our committee review mid to late February. We should be able to, to make recommendations to the manager and enter into contracts, um, in March and, um, be sort of off to the races, if you will, with the new round of grant, uh, contracts. Note that all projects should be completed in the calendar year of 2022. And just a, kind of a backup mindset of the overview is what the grant program is supposed to try to do, right? So we want to assist neighborhood associations with beautification, identity and community-based projects. And a little more specifically, to engage residents and, and, you know, increase community spirit and pride and community relations and provide some sort of public benefit that helps us attract and retain quality workforce that we just had a conversation about. Ensure that Waco neighborhoods kind of remain vibrant places to live, work and play. It's great that y'all put me in the lineup right after that. Also, just a few details of the grant program. It is available to City of Waco Neighborhood Associations. And I might also add, four projects inside Waco City Limits. Grants should be, you know, public benefit, public accessible. There is a maximum grant amount per project of $7,500. There's a 25% match required on most projects, but not all. If they're that real public piece, it becomes something that we, the City of Waco owns, there wouldn't be a match on that. But most, we're all easily able to meet that with volunteer times for the events. After they have successfully completed one grant in one grant year cycle, they can apply for two in subsequent grant rounds. So those five can apply for two in this upcoming cycle if they so choose. There's still a maximum per project of $7,500 and there's a total maximum for, uh, the neighborhood associations of $10,000. So they could probably do a larger and a smaller project or two equal-sized projects, but still a maximum of 10 per neighborhood. And if you're out there, anywhere, watching on TV and are interested in this and we haven't had the opportunity to talk to you yet, please check out the grant program information at waco-texas.com/neighborhoods. Call us, email us. We are, we are here, um, to, to try to answer questions, uh, about what qualifies, when you need to do certain things, how you, how you need to submit your paperwork, any of that sort of stuff. We are happy to help. And with that, I will take questions.
I only have one quick one because I know we're short on time. I wanted to know how will the, there are several neighborhood associations that are re-establishing or dormant at this time. You know, how are we getting information to them about participating in this upcoming grant cycle?
The ones that we still have contact people for, that's fairly easy. We're getting it to those contact folks. The rest of it really depends on, um, just the outreach that we're able, we're, uh, we have generated some interest for people who are in dormant neighborhood associations or active neighborhood associations from that marketing campaign. So we have tried to bring them into the fold.
So for instance, Cameron Park will be fully vested by, in enough time that they should be eligible for?
Cameron Park is on it. Uh, in case you don't know, they are a newly formed neighborhood association. They just adopted bylaws at their last meeting. They already have a grant committee working. I've been at those meetings. They're in it. There are others, um, that we think may follow, uh, certainly, and we do expect more applications this round.
And I guess I, I beg that question because it, there will be some changes to Cameron Park Neighborhood Association, so, or could be some changes to Cameron Park and the association in the December vote. So that's what I meant by that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
And really quick, um, we, uh, there's, there is an executive session item that we need to get to before, um, the business session. And so I, I'm great with a, a few more questions, but, um, it's, it's, uh, almost 5:40 and we have a meeting at 6:00. So I just want to make sure that, and there's some executive sessions we have to talk about before 6:00 PM.
What happens when we take that break?
So, um, so it, uh, I don't want to stop a discussion, but I, I also, if there's discuss, uh, questions that can come to, uh, to staff through email, then I might suggest we do that. Any, any other questions that we want to flesh out now?
All right, great.
Thank you, Mallette.
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks, Mallette.
Uh, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:38.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, Brent McCain versus Officer Fabian Klipka III, Cause Number 621-CV00442, pending in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Texas Waco Division. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.7072. Three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And four, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, nomination and appointment of individuals to the McLennan County Appraisal District Board of Directors. We are now in executive session at 5:39 PM.